Issue, this is an interesting discovery where while it's, you know, on one hand, it's kind of bad news that all of this stuff is in these streams. The really good news is that we've figured it out and we have a plan to go extract it. So I'll turn it over to John and Kyle and they'll walk you through it and then any of us will be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thanks.
All right, so as County Executive Prezi alluded to, we're going to talk to you tonight a little bit about a project that we've been working on. Kind of the project area, just to kind of set the stage a little bit, is called the Dorn Creek watershed. That's highlighted in yellow there on the screen that you can see up there. It's kind of just on the northern side of Lake Mendota nestled between Wanakee and Middleton. And if you're going to go to the west of that watershed, you kind of see some pretty steep hills. It's got some gentle slopes of kind of that 6%. But then as you move farther towards the lake, towards the east, it really starts to flatten out. And the stream actually, when it gets towards that lower portion or towards the lake, actually has got really low flows, or not low flows, but low velocities. So it's moving very slow through that system. And so that kind of describes a little bit of the study area that we have there. And just kind of zooming in a little bit, as I mentioned before, it's just to the south of Wanakee. And we chose this particular site for two reasons. The first one is that we have two USGS monitoring stations there, one on Highway M, which is right here to the farthest to the east, and then one on Highway Q, which is just a little bit to the west. What's nice about those gauges is that they're giving us real time, as it's, as this rain event, as there's runoff, it's collecting data and it's giving us that real time information that we're able to analyze. And those have been in place since 2013. So we've got a couple of years of data that's been collected and they're slated to be in use for the foreseeable future, for at least five to 10 years. So we've got a good monitoring program in place there. The second reason this watershed was selected was that it's located on the northern side of Lake Mendota, where the county has worked with agriculture for a very long time, probably close to 30 years, 30-plus years, in implementing various conservation practices, or BMPs, or conservation systems, to try to keep soil and nutrients on that agricultural land and prevent it from getting into surface water. And so kind of diving into that a little bit to kind of set the background stages, back kind of in the early, early 1990s, there was a study that was done kind of on that, in this particular watershed, looked at all the farmsteads. So all the livestock production sites, or feedlots, or barnyards, I guess, as you would call them, and looked at inventorying those to determine what the resources concerns were of those sites. And we implemented various conservation practices, including roofs, you can see a picture over here, to try to prevent rainwater from getting in contact with that manure and those nutrients and running offsite. Other practices that were put in include like stormwater detention basins. We've also done like eaves or gutters to take that clean water and divert it around the manure. To date, we have roughly 60% of those livestock facilities or barnyards addressed with a conservation practice or system. That remaining 40%, we continue to work with. And there's also a significant portion that's kind of located between these two growing communities, Wanakee to the north and Middleton, that are kind of in a transition stage. So a lot of them are transitioning either out of agriculture, or they're not sure who they want to hand their operation over to in the future. And so continuing to facilitate and work with them, but they're kind of not certain what their future is in relation to having animals on that particular site. In addition, we also do conservation practices and conservation plans. And that's targeted primarily on the cropland that's in that watershed. And there's roughly 6,000 acres of cropland in this particular Dorn Creek watershed. And to date, we have conservation practices and plans on 5,400 acres, or roughly 90%, which is great. And the types of practices that this includes, that these plans have in them, include different tillages, like no till or reduced tillage. They include different cropping rotations that have cover crops. We can do structural practices, like you see here, which is like harvestable buffers along stream corridors that help trap sediment nutrients, grass waterways for gully erosion. And there's a whole suite of different practices that we can use to help customize that particular farming operation and work with them to find a practice that, and a system that works for them. So it's not really prescriptive, it's more of what works for their system, because there's a bunch of different tools that we can use. One of the big tools that's in that toolbox is called a nutrient management plan. And this is a practice that we promote quite heavily throughout the county. To date, we have roughly 75% of the cropland in this watershed, we had a nutrient management plan for in our office. And we like that because there's two metrics, or two things that we can look at within those plans. One is called a phosphorus index, and that's the amount of phosphorus that's leaving the edge of the field and getting to nearby surface water. And then there's also a soil loss metric in there too, that we can use to determine how much of that soil is potentially getting from that farmed field into surface water as well. And so when we looked at all the crop, nutrient management plans that we had for the cropland in this watershed, and we kind of evaluated it, we have a target that we're shooting for that the whole state has. So the state has set a target standard of a PI of six. So that's six pounds of phosphorus per year that can get to nearby surface water. And when we looked at all the fields in this particular watershed, we see that the average is around three. So in essence, the farmers and agriculture producers in that watershed are performing at twice that performance standard, or so they're significantly below where they're supposed to be at, which is great. That just, and that's a combination of all the different conservation practices they put in, as well as changes in their tillage and operations. So it's great to see that high performance. When we looked at soil losses, I mentioned before, we kind of have a target that we're shooting for of four, based on the soil types that are up there. And when we looked at what the actual soil loss was coming from those fields, we see that it's around 1.8. So once again, they're at that high level, they're doing two times better than what's kind of the target that they're shooting for. And so it's a really good high-level performance that shows us that the soil is staying on those fields and it's not getting to nearby surface water. So when we kind of looked through kind of these nutrient management plans and these two kind of metrics, soil and nutrients, we were kind of shocked when we started to look at the water quality data, because we thought with this high level of performance, we should see improvements in the water quality. And so by having those gauges there, we were able to look at an entire water year, which is represented here by this graph. So this is the 2013 water year, starting in October of 2012 and going to September of 2013. And the bars represent the total amount of phosphorus. But we can break total phosphorus out into two components, the dissolved component, which is what's dissolved in the water, and then the particular component, which is attached to like the soil particles and organic matter and stuff that's moving through the system as well. And we like to look at those and kind of those two different components, because they kind of tell little, little different stories. And so when we looked at the total year, roughly 55% of the load, or 55% of that total phosphorus coming through that gauge here on Highway M, was in this dissolved form, or that form that's in solution in the water. And that was kind of shocking to us, because the practices that I mentioned earlier are really designed and focused at targeting that particular fraction, so the portion that's attached to the soil particles. And when we look at the majority being in the dissolved form, we really don't have a lot of tools in our toolbox to try to get that phosphorus out of the system before it gets downstream. In addition, we also have a target concentration that we're shooting for, for a lot of the streams in Dane County, and that's .075 milligrams per liter. And it's just a different way of looking, instead of looking at loading, you can look at concentrations. And when we look at what we have coming through the gauges here, we're at three times that concentration. So there's a long ways to go before we can get to that target value. And so we started to ask ourselves, well, with this high level of performance from the cropland and the farm and the agricultural sector, what are some of the issues, or what are the other, some of the other sources that may be impacting, causing these phosphorus levels to be so high? And that kind of gets into us looking at the in-stream sediments, and John's going to kind of take it from here and talk a little bit more about that.
Okay, so imagine, so imagine this is a crop field here, and that crop field there has a, has a stream or water running through it. And at, and, maybe this isn't on, okay. So on that crop field, you may have soil particles, or what I represent in orange here, or you could, you could think of that as phosphorus as well, attached to the sediment. So what happens when it rains is those would leave the field, some would go further downstream off the, off the picture, and some would stay essentially in the stream. I mean, that's where it would deposit. And as Kyle mentioned, when we would have a, have a site like that, what would we want to do? We would want to put some practice in, for example, a buffer strip along the stream. So if we would have those nutrients on the field, that buffer strip would be there to prevent that material, or that phosphorus, may not be 100% effective, but it would reduce the amount of phosphorus going to the streams. So now what you see is, is phosphorus that's in that stream. So question mark is, what about all this stuff now that's in the stream before we had practices? And we call this legacy phosphorus. So the phosphorus that's there because of something that happened in the past, now we have the ability to trap it through conservation practices, but what about all that stuff that wasn't trapped, that's now in our streams? And is that a water quality problem that we should be concerned about? So there's some reports that are out there, this is the Yhara Clean Report, that if we reduce the load by 50%, we will achieve, we will meet our water quality criteria that we would like to see. So there's a cost with that. And as we continue to do these efforts, as Kyle said, putting practices on the landscape, right? We want to ask this question, does reducing phosphorus load improve water quality? Well, yes, we want to keep doing this stuff that's on the land, we want to improve water quality. If we reduce the phosphorus, we will improve water quality. But oftentimes in our, in our mind, we are actually asking ourselves this question, does reducing phosphorus load immediately improve water quality? So if we put a buffer strip or do some practice on the landscape today, do we see the outcome And if we don't, is it because of legacy phosphorus play some role? What's already stored in the system, is that playing some role that's masking our, our ability to see improved water quality? And then ultimately, as we keep spending the money and doing these efforts, how long until we see water quality improvement? Is it within our lifetime? Is it within our kids? Is it the grandkids? What lifetime do we, will we see benefits or improvements in water quality? And does legacy phosphorus, or already the phosphorus stored in the streams, play some role on, on not timely seeing those, those outcomes? So we set out to do a study. We have three phases here. The first phase is measurements. We wanted to measure how much phosphorus is in there, how old is it, is this really hot source of phosphorus? Then the second phase is, well, we identify that there's phosphorus in here, let's try and remove it. And when we remove it, let's make sure that there's, there's not some environmental concerns that we're going to have. So for example, we removed that bottom out of there, and then we also then tested in the water to see what, what we're doing in the water. Are we stirring things up? Is there some concerns that we, we need to consider as we, as we move through the project? And then finally, after removal, is the water cleaner? What's the phosphorus in the water? And then in time, does it just fill back up? And just because it fills up doesn't mean that that's, that's an issue. Is the new sediment that's being supplied into it have less phosphorus? Is it cleaner than what it was decades ago? So we would want to measure how much phosphorus is in the sediment. Okay, so going back to the original phase, phase one, which is measurements, imagine that bottom area, which is that, that darker brown, is the accumulated muck in the stream. That's a cross-section of the stream. And what we wanted to do was measure how much phosphorus is in our water, how much phosphorus, if we take sediment cores, and then we partition them out into different layers, silt, clay, sand, measure how much phosphorus is in all those layers. And is this a source of phosphorus? Well, to determine if it's a source of phosphorus, then what we did is we measured how much phosphorus diffuses out of those sediments. So that phosphorus is sitting in the stream. If it just stays there, it may not be a problem, for example, to the lake, because it just sits there. But if the phosphorus that's in those sediments is diffusing out and going into the water and going downstream, then that can cause a water quality impairment downstream. So we measured the phosphorus diffusion out, and here's an image of our sediment cores. There's four cores stacked next to each other. And maybe hard to see on the, on the screens, but we put some water on top of that fourth core, the far core, and you can see it's kind of outlined in that, in that light green color there. And what we are doing is measuring how much phosphorus leaches out of those sediment cores. So for example, as I show this picture, you start to see these green dots come up, and then it gets greener. So in other words, phosphorus that's in that sediment is diffusing out into the water, and as, as we get base flow or storm flow, that, that is moving to our lakes. So in summary, I will show the results, but before I do, to give everyone a sense of what Dorn Creek looks like, this is what Dorn Creek is. This is Mike Sorgi with DNR, so DNR has helped us out quite a bit. So I'll play this video here, and you can get a sense of what the stream would look So he's measuring the stream now. He said, let's see if I can get out of here. Okay, so this is very typical of what Dorn Creek looks like. This, this accumulated muck, even where he's standing right now with the water there, there's still muck underneath him, he's probably another foot in muck right there. So it's all throughout the stream like this. And in summarizing the results here, the first one is how much phosphorus is in the sediment? Is this a high source of phosphorus? So we measured how much is in the stream. We had 50 cores, so a lot of cores, a lot of data, and our average value was 5,000. So just think about the number of about 5,000. And then what we did is we measured, what are some other sources of phosphorus in this watershed, to give a sense of scale? Where does this fit? So the first one was the adjacent crop fields, which we found that the number was 700 parts per million of phosphorus. So in other words, the stream is seven times more concentrated than the adjacent fields. We had one barnyard close to the watershed that we measured, which is only one sample, which is 10,000. But also consider that on the crop field and on the barnyard, there's still an opportunity to put practices in to prevent that from going to the stream. This is already in our stream. This is already, already there. So in other words, we have high amounts of phosphorus in, in Dorn Creek. And if we equate that to a pounds, in two miles is 75,000 pounds of phosphorus. The annual load to Lake Mendota is about 75,000 pounds from all its tributaries coming in. So to give a sense of scale and an annual basis, we have that much sitting in two miles of stream. So the final test, as I mentioned before, was the phosphorus diffusion. How much diffuses out and causes a water quality problem? And what we found was that the amount, the rate at which it diffuses out is .075 milligram per liter. And interestingly, what this is, is this is equal to the water quality standard. So in other words, the stream sediments alone, if we could shut off everything, are equal to the water quality standard. So we can't have any more inputs coming in. So the goal was to reduce 50% of the load. Well, we're already at the water quality standard, just with the stream sediments alone. So definitely, these are a source to water quality. So originally I had some questions about how long until we see water quality improvements? So we leave the stream sediments alone, and they continue to diffuse out phosphorus, how long until we see it? So we know how much phosphorus is there, we know a rate that it diffuses, and what we can figure out is that it takes 66 years for all this phosphorus to diffuse out of our, out of those stream sediments. But then again, we also have load coming in. So we have additional load coming in, and as I mentioned before, if we want to have clean water, the, this report, Yhara Clean, says, well, we need to reduce 50% of the load. So if we still have 50% coming in, actually it will take 99 years before this phosphorus is leached out of our stream, and we achieve the water quality we're looking for. So the next question was, well, how old are these? And this, this is, is asked because, well, if we're going to remove it, is it just going to fill in with the next big storm? Or did the previous storm just flush it all out? Can we even keep up with what's going on here? Is it just very dynamic? So in general, we did some dating, and in general, the results are, if you go a foot down, it's 25 years old. If you go two feet down, it's 75 years old. So in other words, this has been accumulating over all the years. Kyle had that map that showed the topography of the land. This is in a flat, low-grading area where things just want to accumulate and keep, keep settling out. So this has actually created a trap for us to now come in and remove it, but at the, at the consequence of it, keep diffusing out phosphorus. So, so because it's a trap, we wanted to go in there and try and remove it. We removed 250 feet, and in general, here's a picture of where we removed, the green line shows where we removed. There's a yellow with the pipeline, and then we put it up on land and seeded that over. So here is the removal, we removed 250 feet, and we're doing that in the stream with a hydraulic dredge, and then it pumps it up onto the land, and then that's where we do the dewatering and the dewatering system. So very similar to, for you, Manona, what you did over here with Bell Isle area, where you pumped it up, put it up on land, and what we're doing here then is, is seeding it over, and I think you guys actually did the same thing. You just put it back up on the land, seeded over, made it permanent cover, so this can't go back into the water again. So this is what it looked like before, on the left side there, and then the hand with, with the muck. And afterwards, what we found, and we've done some cross-sections, stream cross-sections, there's a sand gravel bottom underneath, which we believe was the original bed at some, some point, 100 years ago, because that's what the age of the sediment is. And what we found was that there was a turtle that was swimming in here. So we also hope to see that not only is this removing the phosphorus, but also habitat for new, or habitat for fish or turtles, these sort of species that like this area. And that turtle, if we zoom in on him, he was very happy. So, okay, so as Executive Prezi mentioned, then expanding this work, not only Dorn Creek, the map here on the right shows the areas.
(inaudible) in two minutes. Please send your items to the main desk for check. At this time, we have all agents to please take this building. Thank you.
Okay, so it may be hard to see, so I will say the areas that are, the areas that are in red are the areas that we are looking at for possible removal. Those include Yhara River, Six Mile Creek, Dorn Creek, Token Creek, Nine Springs, and Door Creek. And overall, there's a cost to remove this, and expected phosphorus that we will remove out of the system. And currently, right now, we're working on Dorn Creek. We just did the 250-foot pilot. Now we're going to do between Highway M and Q, the gauging stations, between those gauging stations Kyle showed, which would equate to 2.3 miles. And we plan to start that work in the fall here of 2017 to, to remove that material. And then the others to subsequently fall in as we continue to collect data and monitor. So if there's any questions, we're happy to answer them.
You're right, it was difficult to see on the map. And so is there some reason why you chose sections, what looked like little sections of a whole bunch of different streams, as opposed to focusing on, I want you to go there?
Yeah, so the sections, yeah, may be hard to see, but the sections were chosen because these are actually at, at low-grading areas.
Okay.
Where sediment accumulates. Some of those other areas are steep.
Okay.
And they don't accumulate the material.
Okay.
And we've worked with our partners at DNR, and they've also identified these areas as critical areas.
The worst.
Because of their work out in the streams and doing biological surveys and assessments. So.
Okay. Jan, did you?
I just have two comments. I mean, one, I want to, I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight, and two specific things, I want to thank you for applying the scientific method to a problem. You're clearly measuring what the problem is and how the solution is expected to address that problem. And then secondly, you're using our tax dollars to address this problem. And I want to thank you for both of those things. And I don't think I need to elaborate anymore. Thank you.
I just had one more question. Do you see eventually working in other areas, once you do these 33 miles? Or do you think this will take care of the, most of the problem of this type of legacy phosphorus?
There are possible other areas. These are the ones we're focusing on first, to get a handle on that, in terms of the future of that. What we would like to do, which I haven't talked about much, is in terms of the next step, would be we clean this all out, there's still load coming from the system. So our next phase on Dorn Creek is we're going to remove between Q and M, and after that, we like to create traps, strategically place these. So what we've done to remove it, we can trap it somewhere else from it accumulating in these areas. And then those traps could serve as strategic locations for future removal. So I think the next stage after removing it is putting in these traps to, to see if we can collect more material.
We also need to, this is not the only solution to the problem. We still want to keep those efforts on those other practices. Because the more we can keep that source control and that, those nutrients and that sort of love on the land, the less maintenance we have to do then coming back into the system too, once it is cleaned out.
Anyone else?
And I don't know if I mentioned, because as I mentioned, we've done two of these tonight. We were in Wanakee earlier, so I apologize if I don't remember which place I said this. But in addition to the, as far as the cost, the dredging part is about $9 million of it. About another $3 million is going to be for habitat restoration, because in addition to all the benefit of removing the phosphorus, we're going to get the benefit of, you know, rejuvenating a whole lot of really, you know, degraded habitat and a lot of wetland habitat that's out there too.
Well, that sounds great. Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for your time.
Very interesting.
We appreciate it. Thanks.
Okay, I think the next item on the agenda is an appearance by a representative of Shank SC, a presentation of the 2016 audit.
Okay, good evening. I'm going to go through the annual financial report of the city of Manona, and then the management communications. Certainly, if anyone has any questions, you could stop me and we can walk through the questions, but.
Sir, excuse me, could you state your name?
Oh, David Mako, from Shank. So the annual financial statements are, represent the financial position, results of operations of the city of Manona. So we go through and, as your auditor, go through and audit the financial records and issue what we call an independent auditor's report. So the document, our audit report, has the independent auditor's report. We're pleased to indicate that, from our perspective, our audit indicated that the city's financial records are in very good financial position. We were able to express an unmodified opinion, which means we would make no modifications to the report you have in front of you. So it is a clean audit report. It goes through, there's a number of different steps and phases within the audit report. I'm just going to, you know, just touch at a high level the audit report, and then talk a little bit about the trending information in our management communications. But there's a section called the management's discussion and analysis that goes through what happened in 2017, or 2016, and compares it to 2015. So it's a very good document prepared by Mark, that kind of analyzes what is the real significant changes. Overall, the city remains in very strong financial condition. You know, we, we do present what we call our government-wide financial statements. When you look at the government-wide financial statements, they represent all the assets that the city is maintaining, which represents about $106 million of assets. A lot of these assets are the roads, the buildings that are used to provide services to the residents here within Manona. But a very strong balance sheet from a standpoint of your assets that you're maintaining and managing, they're really reported in two sections, both your governmental general fund and your business type or utility operation. So, you know, from the only real change from last year in your government-wide to this year, is the Wisconsin retirement system. Last year was the first year you were required to report your proportionate share. So the Wisconsin retirement system is a cost-sharing multiple employer plan. Prior to this current year, which is really reporting 2015 data, because of the time it takes the retirement system to produce data, the state of Wisconsin was one of two states that were overfunded. With the data through 2015, because of the stock market impact in 2015, it is showing a slight liability, unfunded liability. So it doesn't mean that the city hasn't paid any of your required responsibilities, it just means that overall, the system, if you think of a pension system, it's heavily reliant on investment returns. So any given year, they're expecting over $6 billion return. 2015, they 2015, they actually lost $600 million. So, it's just playing the market, so unfortunately, that does interject into the financial statements of the city. The rest of the report kind of goes through the fund financial information, which is the annual budget that you adopt. I'm just going to hit, in our management communications, a couple of the highlights and certainly would entertain any questions any one may have. The first couple pages of the management communication letter really talks about our audit. How did our audit go? What was the results of our audit? And maybe to put it into perspective of what an audit really is. When we come in, we look and spend some time in every department, kind of reviewing some procedures. We also look at a lot of the things that are happening within the city, looking at the TIF districts that you are maintaining, looking at the redevelopment that is occurring, looking at the compliance with the appropriate statutes that relate to TIF districts and relate to your general obligation debt, relate to property tax. So, there's a number of different things that our audit does touch. So, oftentimes, we talk about auditing, we talk about financial numbers. But within a government setting, we're doing much more. Because as stewards of government funds, you're managing both from an internal control and a compliance perspective. So, from a perspective of your audit, it entails multiple different dynamics of what we're looking at. So, we're pleased to indicate that, from our perspective, the audit went very well. The audit really goes through a number of different functions and looks at your accounting practices. And so, there wasn't one new standard that was implemented in the current year. It just required additional disclosures. So, it didn't really change any of the numbers you see in your financial report, but does, did require some additional disclosures. Then on the bottom of page two, there's a number of estimates. So, obviously, within any audit report, we can't wait for every number to be perfect, especially when you're dealing with actuaries related to the Wisconsin retirement system, et cetera. Just to kind of give you a framework of, you know, an actuarial report for a state of Wisconsin's retirement system, obviously, there's a lot of projections of lives and things that could vary. So, there are a number of estimates that are embedded within your report. Our audit is really designed to say, are you following appropriate and reasonable estimate bases? And you are. We had no concerns with respect to that. So, from our perspective, we had nothing that we consider either deficiencies in your internal controls or non-compliance with laws or regulations. So, we made a couple of recommendations in the back, financial policies, but those are really just designed to streamline or to improve what you have. It isn't designed to indicate that you have significant problems. So, our role is really to kind of review what you're doing. Each year, we look at what we call different, you know, unpredictability tests and different tests. So, from our perspective, the audit went very well. Now, when we look at the budgetary basis of which you adopt, we like to focus on your governmental funds and we like to focus on the results of our operations. So, within your governmental funds, you really have a couple of different funds, but your most important fund is your general fund. It is your general operating fund. It consists of the majority of your activities. So, from our perspective, what we do is we look at budget-to-actual comparisons. Your original budget and final approved budget did project a use of fund balance of approximately $130,000. Because of the good budget year, you actually had a surplus of 97. So, we look at budget to actual, and what that indicates is that you had a very good budget year. Your budget variances within revenues, you had more revenues than you budgeted, and expenses, you had less expenses incurred overall than budgeted. So, the combination of those two really converted the negative reduction budgeted into a positive surplus. We also then look at your general fund balance in relationship to your expenses. Your unassigned or really uncommitted funds did go up. And your overall unassigned fund balance is currently about 27% of your 2016. So, from that perspective, you're right in line with your city policy. And we believe that, from that perspective, the financial statements indicate that you're in good financial shape as you enter 2017 budget year. Any questions on that? The rest of the report goes through TIF districts, and obviously, when you're redeveloping, there's certain times when you're incurring, at the end of 2016, the net unreimbursed project costs across all the TIFs is about 20, almost $25 million. So, those are costs that you're going to recover through future increments. Some of your districts are more mature, some are just starting. So, every district has a different phase. But from a standpoint, it goes through, our audit goes through all the TIF districts and compliance, and there's a whole bunch of summaries in the management communications. I'm not going to go through one by one. Obviously, these are managed well by the city staff here, and we really had no, you know, besides the fact of, you know, looking at all the transactions and understanding. Comment three really deals with your debt position. Obviously, there's a general obligation debt. With the redevelopment and the TIF districts, your general obligation debt currently has, stands at about $50 million. A lot of that is related to projects. When we look at, of that $50 million, 22 million is TIF district-related, and about 5.4 million is your utility operations that aren't on the tax rolls. So, from that perspective, it kind of gives you a frame of reference of your general obligation debt. And then, like I indicated, we do have three comments. The comments really involve internal controls, and they're laid out in, on page 14 of the management communications. Like I said, from our perspective, none of the transactions that we looked at were not appropriate, none of the journal entries or credit card disbursements. But we're just recommending here that perhaps the city look at some additional controls. Not because we found anything that was unusual, but just to take a look at that from a control perspective. With that, I'll entertain any questions anyone may have.
Going back to the fund reserve, so our policy has been to keep 15% to 20% fund reserve, and you said 27%?
27, yep.
So, maybe it's semantics, but I think maybe we're not actually in line with our policy because we're 7% over the top end of it. And that, just by way of explanation, I mean, that's, we've typically, often have used funds above the 20% to essentially lower the levy with the notion that if we're keeping an adequate fund reserve, that we shouldn't keep more than that, and, you know, that we should give it back to the taxpayers, basically. So, that's, that's essentially been the thinking. Sometimes, we've used it to pay down debt, debt service. But I don't know if you had any...
Yeah, I mean, you're slightly over. You know, a perspective of 15% to 20% is relative, you know, certainly good benchmarks. But you are, like you said, you are about 7%. My preference as an auditor, and my recommendation always, is to use that surplus for capital projects or one-time things that don't have to be replaced in any budget.
Right, absolutely.
So, sometimes, I've seen municipalities will reduce the operating budget and use that, but that only makes next year's budget very much difficult...
Right.
...to attain. But from the perspective of your policy and where you're at, you have certainly some funds to use if the council so desires.
Right. And we certainly, I think, have taken the approach of not using it for one, or to use it for one-time expenses rather than not for ongoing...
Correct.
...operating expenses.
Yep, yep.
Anything else? Okay, well, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much.
Appreciate that. All right, there is no public hearing tonight. Next is item F, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. On to unfinished business, item G-A, consideration of resolution 17-8-2202, approval of bid for 2017 Bridge Road Park improvements. And this was approved at Finance and Personnel earlier.
I'll move approval.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
So, we have kind of one of three with Bridge Road Park. I think this first one is to approve the site work contract with Humber Contractors. Looking at it in total, the entire project with the site work and playground elements and installation was over budget. So, we had a park and rec board meeting and had a unanimous recommendation to transfer existing capital funds to cover the overage from a Huska tennis court crack filling project that didn't happen this year. So, as you recall from last meeting, after further examination of the courts at Huska, they need a complete renovation instead of just a standard crack filling and recoloring of the courts. So, we were not going to be doing that project this year. We were waiting on the playground equipment to come in, and that came in along with the park and rec board recommendation. So, we're back here tonight to ask for approval of the contract with Humber and then the capital budget amendment to cover the overage of the project.
Any questions? Oliver Kitzler?
I'll just say, and Nancy, feel free to jump in, the Parks Board did have a lengthy discussion on modifying the design and what we might be able to take out in order to get it within budget. But eventually, the discussion really sided with making sure that we do this park right the first time. And a good example would be the water fountain would have saved us, I believe, about $10,000 if we took it out. But that's one of the common complaints we get from Arrowhead, is that it does not have a water fountain. So, we really wanted to make sure we do this right. And so, I just wanted, you know, the councils to know that we did talk about the budget and what we could do. And then, another thing just to note was, when we originally proposed the capital budget last year, it was for $150,000. And then, at the time, the mayor took out the $20,000. So, we were, I mean, playing with kind of that in mind as well, so just wanted to put those comments out.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item, 17-8-2203, amending the 2017 capital budget for Bridge Road Park improvements.
Move to approve.
Okay. Mr. Anderson?
I don't have any further comments.
Any further comments?
No.
This is basically just to move the money?
Correct.
Correct. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to new business, item 2A, consideration of 2017 temporary Class B fermented malt beverage license, application for Manona Eastside Business Alliance for the craft beer, cheese, and chocolate pairing at 5900 Manona Drive, Manona, Wisconsin, which is at the Eastside Club.
I'll move to suspend the rules, take this item out of order.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, and who's going to speak?
Kristy Schilling from the Manona Eastside Business Alliance. So, we've not ever done this application process before, but because of this event, it kind of comes together at the last minute, and it requires, the Eastside Club is largely volunteer staff, to make a large beer order for us that is a little bit complicated at the last minute, that we thought it would be easier for us to get the class, the temporary license, so we could place that order ourselves and have the beer delivered there versus going through them as an extra step.
Okay. So, are there any questions?
I have one.
Mr. Wood?
For the city clerk. I know at License of Beer, or maybe for Kristy, we talked about getting an additional licensed beverage server, I believe Jim, is it Gornish? Was licensed in Madison?
Yeah, and so, we did get that name, and I called that into Joan. I'm trying to remember her name. It was Sue.
Sue Bessler.
Thank you.
Who is a licensed doctor here at Eastside Club already. So, she is...
And she'll be working this event, though?
They believe so at this point, yes.
Okay.
And you have the information in time to get it out to this person, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Good.
Any other questions?
Monday's the event.
Yes, we'd love to see you there. It's Thursday, September 21st, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m.
Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, item B, consideration of premise extension application for 2017, 2018 Class A liquor and Class A fermented malt beverage licenses for Ultimate Mart LLC Doing Businesses Pick and Save, number 8181, 6540, Manona Drive, Manona, Wisconsin. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
I will move to suspend the rules and take this out of order.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second. Okay.
Mrs. Cotton is from Roundy's Incorporated.
So, maybe before you start, and she can certainly describe it a lot better than I can, this is something new, a new, new to Manona certainly, and relatively new to Pick and Save. So, with that, why don't you go ahead and explain how it's new?
Awesome, thank you. Like Madam Clerk said, my name is Brianna Cotton. I'm with Roundy Supermarkets. So, what we're doing is we're rolling out our new e-commerce option called ClickList. This is the Kroger company's nationwide program to jump into the e-commerce market, essentially. So, what it is, it allows our customers to order their groceries online and then come to the store and park in designated parking spots, which you probably see in your packet, to pick up their groceries. So, what I'm here requesting, as the resolution says, is an increase to our liquor premises so that we can deliver our beer and wine and liquor groceries to our customers in those parking spaces. So, I could kind of go through the process of how this all goes. So, our associates get the order online, and an associate who's 18 years of age or older will go and pick all the groceries from the different aisles, and that'll include the beer and the wine and everything, and stage it in an area for the customers to come and pick it up. The, any order that has liquor or beer or wine will be marked with that as such. And then, when the customer comes and parks in the spot and calls the number on the sign, again, associate who's 18 years of age or older, as well as who holds a bartender's license in the state of Wisconsin, will come and bring it out to the car. During that process, before the customer's gotten there, they have run the order through so that they have a receipt. But then, the order is then put on hold before it goes through. It's important to note that Roundy's policy is that no transaction with liquor can go through without a birthday, an ID and a birthday. We ID anybody, even if they're 90. So, you, the transaction is then paused, and then the associate brings out the groceries, IDs the person who's in the car, as long as they are 21 or older and allowed to purchase alcohol, they note the birthday on the receipt, and then give the groceries to the customer and then go back into the store to finish the transaction. So, that kind of explains what the process, the backend process of ClickList, as well as explains Roundy's practices as it comes to liquor. We, like I said, will have everybody 18 years of age or older, and they will also hold that bartender's license.
Many questions?
Has there ever been, and given that this is a nationwide program, I guess I'm envisioning that somebody delivering groceries out to a car is a little bit more vulnerable than somebody standing behind a cash register or with a group of associates around. Has there been any problems with programs elsewhere?
With the program in that way? I have not heard of any problems as far as that goes. This is very new to Roundy's. We have only three other stores...
Okay.
...that have it. However, it is not very new to Kroger. It's been around for about a year and a half. Before I came here, I worked in the Indianapolis division, and we had quite a few of these up and running already. And we, I did not hear of any problems like that.
How late is the Roundy store here open, the Pick and Save?
Oh, that's a good question. Probably 11:00. No, how late is the store open?
Right.
Yeah, 11:00.
11:00.
Yes.
But the liquor is closes at 9:00?
Exactly. Our cash registers close down at 9:00 PM. You can't, you cannot run a transaction with liquor after 9:00 PM, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
But my understanding is the sales for this, they're gonna, they would end at 8:00?
No, they'll end at 9:00.
For this, too?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item, consideration of Resolution seventeen-eight, twenty-two oh seven, award of bid for redevelopment area nine, building demolition project. This is put forth by the Finance and Personnel Committee where it was approved. Is there a motion to take this out of order?
Move to take this out of order?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay.
This item is to award the bid for demolition at the riverfront. We advertised for bids. We received five for demo of five structures and the other work listed in the resolution, including asbestos abatement, et cetera. The low bidder was Robinson Brothers in the amount of $998,435. The engineer's estimated cost was 1.3 to 1.6 million. Robinson Brothers met the pre-qualification requirements, and a question at finance, have we worked with them before? Do we know anything about them? They did apparently do the demo for Garden Circle, and they also demoed the Ruby's Building at the Riverfront site for us a couple of years ago.
Any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, item D, consideration of Resolution seventeen-eight, twenty-two oh eight, award of bid for Bridge Road Park playground equipment. This is coming from the Park and Recreation Board. Mr. Anderson, is there a motion?
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Jake?
First off, Menona resident Jake is very happy about the Pick and Save proposal. My grocery experience much more convenient. So, this is the best news I've heard all day today. So, the playground equipment proposal was part of our project. We had two vendors that submitted bids, and the Park and Rec Board recommended the lowest qualified bidder for the equipment. It's about a six-week timeframe right now as far as getting equipment delivered. So, we're still hoping to have this project completed this fall. Be a little bit of timing with the site contractor, but it does resemble the site plan that's in your packet with the elements that would include the main playground, a zip line, some spring riders, and then the concrete ping pong table. We have already purchased the swing set, which is kind of a proprietary type of swing set. It's called a, oh my gosh, well, the name slips my memory right now, but it's a swing that you can swing at with a baby and a toddler facing each other, expression swing. So, that'll be another first for us. It'll be pretty cool along with our normal swing. So, and then, the fundraising that we've done throughout the summer, we'll be purchasing an additional piece that wasn't included in this packet, but it's a pretty fun piece that will serve a variety of age levels. So, this, I would say this will be one of our, you know, it'll be right up there with the rest of the playgrounds that we have in the city.
Any questions?
Just have, I just had a constituent the other day ask me about the ping pong in particular the other day, because they said that they were aware of ping pong tables that were tried in other places, but that 90% of the time, there was, it didn't work very well because with very little wind, since it's a very, since it's a real ping pong mall, and it doesn't take much to derail a, do you know anything from talking to the...
There's only like three of them in the state, and there's like three more getting installed. So, you know, the vendors, of course, seem to think it's a popular amenity. I think it's a different, unique amenity. The bid item, it's 3,600 bucks, so it's not in the big scheme of things. It's not a huge deal. But, you know, I think like maybe we can use pickleball paddles and the balls or be able to modify it, but I think it'll be fine.
Okay. Anyone else? Are we providing the paddles and the ball? How does that work?
Well, it'll be bring your own. I think as we look at some of our future programming, we're looking at doing more of the on-the-go type of play, playground days where we can be at a specific park and have events going on. So, that will be a perfect park where we can provide some of that. So, yeah, I mean, we'll have stuff if they want to trek all the way over to the
To sign it out.
Rec Department, unless whoever lives closest and counsel to that park. Let's see, Jennifer, yeah, maybe he's at Jennifer's house.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, item E, consideration of Resolution seventeen-eight, twenty-two oh four, approving updates to the City of Menona Emergency Operations Plan. This was tabled because we had some things we wanted checked into at Finance and Personnel, but it's not up for approval tonight anyway. So, City Administrator Little?
Okay, these next three items go together a little bit with the adoption of the new code book, which we hope to do on September 18th. This is basically making the emergency plan match the new code book and just doing some very nominal updates to update some of the personnel changes that we've had since December 2014. It removes some names and uses titles wherever possible to keep the book better updated, such as just saying Dane County Emergency Management Director. One thing that the Finance Committee did want us to check into, the code book says emergency management instead of emergency government. So, we just want to basically triple-check. I did check with the attorney, but they asked us to double-check again with the Public Safety Committee to make sure that that, you know, was acceptable. So, again, it's about making the ordinance and the plan match each other. And finally, it had also run through this body, but it was quite some time ago. Attachment A refers to the emergency management director rather than city administrator because the ordinance actually describes an appointment process for the director. And I remember when this came back before this body quite some time ago, we had considered, should we change it the other way, and we decided to just keep the appointment process in the ordinance the way it was. So, that's how the final book is drafted. So, like we stated, we'll do some checking on that one point I mentioned, emergency management versus emergency government. But I just wanted to get that in front of you because, as I said, there's lots of items coming for the new code book, and this is one of them.
Alder Kitzler?
I have a question. So, on page 50 of it, it mentions the vacant lot at the Public Works Facility, which is now the dog park. So, I don't know if you still want to load debris into the dog park, which is fine, because it's not a park property. It is technically Public Works property. But I did notice that, and I didn't know if that has to be altered.
We can certainly make that, it's a sort of a living document, so yes.
Anything else? Okay, we'll go on to the next, item F, consideration of Resolution seventeen-eight, twenty-two oh five, creating a policy notice and procedure regarding the Americans with Disabilities Act.
This will need to be adopted immediately after the new code book is adopted. But essentially, what we're going to do is remove the chapter in the old code book that referred to the American Disabilities Act and replace it with a policy instead of an ordinance, because it will allow for more timely updates as required by law. And I think it allows you to write it up in a process that people will understand much better. It's a little more user-friendly. And if you look at what other cities do, this is a very standard way of kind of handling filing of grievances under the American with Disabilities Act. So, it's a notice, and it's a procedure, and it's a form for filing, and they sort of all go together. Again, it doesn't need to be adopted tonight, but it would go along with the new code book, and it has been reviewed by the city attorney.
Any questions? Okay, move on to item G, which is Starred for Immediate Action, consideration of Resolution seventeen-eight, twenty-two oh six, providing for the publication, filing, inspection, and adoption of a Code of General Ordinances. Is there...
Move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Move to approve?
Okay.
So, this resolution is required as part of the code adoption process. And what it does is it lets people know that a new code of ordinances is expected to be adopted. And as the schedule works out, it would be September 18th, City Council at the earliest. What it also does is allows for the code book to be open for public inspection at City Hall for at least two weeks before adoption. So, this works kind of similar to how we adopt budgets. And just another thing, City Council members should also have access, that I provided before, to take a look at the electronic version and the detailed Schedule A to see what the changes are throughout the code book. It's pretty extensive. This resolution has also been approved by the city attorney, and we would need to adopt it tonight so we can get the notice published, set up that two-week period so that the full ordinance can come back before this body.
Alder Kitzler?
Just had a quick question. Why would we wait until, I think it says August 31st, we'd be making it public? Why wouldn't we make it public tomorrow?
We can certainly do that. I mean, we have them sort of sitting in the pile in our back office, but if somebody did want to come in and take a look at it, we could certainly put that, you know, bring that up to the counter.
I just didn't know if there was a reason for waiting.
It's just with the timing of the newspaper, you know, by the, I think we missed the deadline for today, and so, we can't get it in this week's paper, so it actually has to go in the next week. But yeah, we certainly could make it available sooner.
Gotcha.
Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. On to item H, consideration of Resolution seventeen-eight, twenty-two oh nine, expressing support for the city and people of Charlottesville, Virginia, and the ideals of equality, liberty, and freedom. This is put forth by Alder Wood and Alder Spate.
Move approval? Or I'll suspend the rules. I'll move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order?
I'll second.
Not move approval?
Wait, all in favor, say aye, first of all.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes.
I'll move approval.
Okay.
I'll beat you to it.
All right. Okay, Alder Wood, do you want to discuss this, or...
Just briefly, I mean, I think the resolution speaks for itself in expressing grave concern, I guess, about the events in Charlottesville on August 11th and August 12th, which is seems like a long, longer ago than whatever it's been, eight days, nine days. And the, essentially, the, I think, the cover that our president has given to these groups to feel free to sort of norm their views have been to some extent normalized. And if he, and his ambivalence, if you, I don't know, how do you, you know, tracking several different statements about it, if he had made a statement that most presidents would have made, I wouldn't, I don't think that most, it wouldn't have been, it would have been, the, there wouldn't have been a need, in my view, for us to say anything, or for many others probably wouldn't have felt the need to say something. Because, I don't know if Alder Spate had anything he wanted to add?
Sure.
Or anybody else for that matter?
Well, we live in very unusual times, and Alder Holmquist had once said that, and I agree with him, that we shouldn't be weighing in on national issues or even state issues routinely when we really have nothing we can do about it. But this, for me, and I think for many of us in this community, is about values and about who we are as a people. And we are representatives of the people, just as our president and members of Congress and members of our state legislature. And we all take an oath to a constitution which represents values and ideas that we all hold dear. It's not about a particular leader. It's not about a particular movement or party. It's about a process of free expression of ideas and democracy. And this young woman, who was killed by people who clearly want to see those who express views like hers to be fearful, and if they, if we so dare as to raise our voices, we might be next. These individuals don't want to live in the society that we all take an oath to. And so, that's why I thank Alder Wood for drafting this amendment. I was privileged to help edit it, but I think the values of this community stand firmly with what is said here, and I urge us to adopt this tonight.
Alder Kitzler?
Just wanted to add my comments that while I join everybody in denouncing this hate in all ways, I just want to make sure that also, you know, our passage of this is really a statement in words and in action of how the city of Menona is a welcoming community, how we are accepting of different races, thoughts, you know, whatever category an individual might be on or categorize themselves as. You know, I think that's a powerful statement. I think a lot of residents share that feeling. And, you know, as I believe the resolution says, our welcome mat is here to stay in the city of Menona, so everybody is welcome, so.
Anyone else?
So, that was some of the edits, and I welcome the edits to this resolution. And I'm glad to see the connection between our stance and voicing of concern with the balance of how it is that this matters for us and how we can actually take very tangible local steps at promoting equity and a welcome community. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yeah, I would just concur with virtually everything that everyone said. I think really, first and foremost, we want our community to know that we are a welcoming community. We welcome diversity and equality, and also that we stand with Charlottesville.
Just one correction. Somewhere in the edits, the woman's name, Heather Heyer, H-E-Y-E-R, was incorrectly spelled, was H-O-Y-E-R.
I'm sorry, what's the correct spelling?
H-E-Y-E-R.
Do we need a motion to approve that change at all, or are you gonna...
I think it's just a typo. I don't think we need a motion for that. We'll make that correction before we mail this out.
All right.
It'll be mailed out, if it's approved tonight, after I get back next week with this edit. We'll delay that a little bit, just so you know. Is that all right?
Yep.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next, we're on to reports of committees, commissions, et cetera, and department managers. Mr. Anderson, did you have anything you'd like to announce?
Yeah, I figured someone needs to be in attendance besides Kevin. So, there's seven days left of the Menona Community Pool being open to the public, so I suggest if you haven't got...
if you haven't got enough swimming or swimming, we're open through, um, Sunday, probably at about four o'clock. Um, to that note, you see me a lot at these meetings, but there's a, a army of people that make our department work. And as we kind of gear towards the end of August, we start to lose a lot of our seasonals, um, and part-time staff. So, it's really been a, a wonderful summer for all intents and purposes with, uh, you know, we have close to seventy-five people working for us at the pool and the parks and the recreation department. So, from our full-time staff, Mrs. Kozorski's done an amazing job with our aquatics division. Uh, we have a full-time parks, uh, maintenance person, Kevin Eckert, and he's, uh, done a great job in kind of, um, learning the ropes fast, so to speak, on, on what we do. And had a really excellent crew, um, in the parks. So, it's, our, our year is cyclical in, in what we do in parks and rec, but it's always a little sad knowing that, uh, um, we lose a lot of our, our people and some of the energy of the summer and we kind of gear back up for fall. But it's, you see me a lot, but I only do just a little. There's a, a whole lot of other people that do, um, a, a great job for the city and I think you should be proud of, of what we have in the people that work for us. And just another note on, I think our parks are one of the great examples of, of, uh, equity and equalizer of playing fields is that our parks are widely used by, um, lots of different, uh, organizations that promote inclusion. And, um, we, we see a lot different side of, of, in our parks and maybe what our demographics say we have in Manona. So, it, it is very, um, I think we're very proud of what we have to offer here as far as our parks for everyone. So, we appreciate that, uh, voice of sentiment.
Um, while we have you here and we appreciate all the Parks Department does for the city, could you give us an update on Schluter Beach and what's happening there?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I've had a lot of, uh, inquiries about the big hole at Schluter Beach from, uh, splash pad to, uh, additional beach area. Um, Mother Nature has really given us a curve ball with final restoration at Schluter. So, the big hole that you see next to the playground is gonna be swing sets. We had some additional funding from our, our donor and through the Parks Board, we are putting in, um, a set of toddler swings there. As soon as the weather, uh, gets a hold of us, it looks like we're supposed to get some nasty weather tonight yet. Um, hopefully this week, um, we can get our holes dug for our poles and then we've got some more base material. We've got our seed and ready to go, but we wanna get this part done first. Um, we have put in a additional pad for a canoe kayak rack at Schluter, so there'll be eight more spots available, uh, starting for the two thousand eighteen season. We have an accessible, uh, ramp into the water for launching kayaks and canoes now at Schluter and then have a spot for a couple more benches. So, um, the amount of use, I think, has at least met my expectation, if not exceeded it, on, on this year. Um, with the cameras that we have and Alder Moore, I think, living right next to it, she can attest to how, how busy it is. Um, almost to the point of challenging to get in there to do work with the equipment, you know, when we're spreading, um, topsoil and there's constantly people there in a variety of activities.
Maybe once the schools are back open, that'll change a little bit?
Yeah. And one last note. So, Food Cart Cinema was this last Saturday, um, another great turnout. Thanks to our sponsors, Chad's Design Build, Lauer Realty, and Red Robin's. So, we had a really fun night. Um, beer sales were okay, not great, but it was a, a really, uh, I think a great turnout and Star Wars, The Force Awakens, uh, another fan vote on date night. Not my, uh, idea of a date night movie, but a lot of other people seemed to enjoy it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say that if, if you, if, uh, you think you're having a hard time grocery shopping now, just wait a few months.
Yeah.
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 That's why the delivery, the pickup option is so wonderful.
All right, Alders, we'll start with Alder Moore.
Nothing to report.
Alder Kittsler?
I'll only report that, uh, library board meeting changed from last week to this Wednesday.
Okay. Alder Wood?
A couple of things. Landmarks met a couple of weeks ago and, uh, proposed a capital budget item for the, um, engineering, architecture work for the pagoda restoration at Stonebridge Park. Um, such an unusual project and structure that, um, we felt like we really needed to get some, like, paid consultant on board, uh, for that. The Friends of the Manona Senior Center and, uh, there was a lot, had, which sponsors the, uh, Wannecro Park Summer Concerts. Uh, the last concert last week was, uh, quite successful. Carl Davic and his group played, um, had a good, good turnout and good fundraising for that. Um, and then the last item is if anybody's looking for lightly-used Eclipse sunglasses, you know where to get them.
Save them for seven years.
Save them. Yeah. That's all.
Okay. Alder Spate?
A couple of things. The Sustainability Committee, uh, is organizing just an impromptu get-together this, uh, Wednesday night, I believe.
Twenty-third.
Yes, Wednesday, the twenty-third.
Wednesday night, yes.
Yes. Um, at the old, um, at the Hilldale Theater, it's the old Sundance Theater, the AMC Dine Theater now. Uh, it's a showing at seven-thirty or seven-forty-five of an inconvenient sequel. Uh, I've already seen it. I'm looking forward to seeing it again. It's a, it's a really inspiring, uh, movie. And so, if you wanna come out and, uh, spend some time with us and see a great movie, there's that on Wednesday. And then we're also working on a leaf management plan, uh, that we're hoping to launch next month. Uh, so we're excited about that. And, um, that's my report.
All right. Alder Holmquist?
Uh, there's a Public Safety Board meeting on Wednesday at six o'clock, so come to that first and then drive over for the movie.
And Alder Corr?
Uh, nothing to report.
Nothing to report. Uh, City Clerk?
I'll, I'll be at the Wisconsin Municipal Clerks Association Conference starting tomorrow, um, through Friday. So, um, be out of the office, learning new stuff. Hopefully, I'll learn what tiffs are all about.
City Administrator Little?
I think Jake forgot to mention National Night Out. That was a very nice event, so kudos to you for that. And also our police and fire departments. Uh, I believe we had two helicopters there, which was a lot of fun for the viewers. And, uh, speaking of Charlottesville, if anyone has been to the June dedication for our Manona mural, um, it's a very nice billboard for diversity. If you saw the people who put that together, every kind of diversity I think you can think of. So, it's a wonderful monument that we have here that will last for decades to come.
That's true. True. Um, I will be attending the, uh, League of Wisconsin Municipalities Executive Workshop this Thursday and Friday in Green Lake where I will learn about all the things I don't know yet about being mayor. Uh, I'll also be meeting with department heads this Thursday as well as next Monday. I'll be meeting with them individually regarding their capital budget requests. And you should have all gotten our budget schedule for the next couple of months from, uh, Mark, I think, last week. So, if you didn't see that, please contact him and he can get it to you. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, uh, thank Alder Kittsler for his editorial about the dark store situation, which appeared in, uh, thanks to the Herald for publishing it. And I, I saw the league also, uh, put a link to it in their newsletter today.
Yeah, it's actually had some pretty good traction. Actually, Joe Freese posted it.
Great.
Hopefully, it does something.
Yeah.
Words only do so much.
Okay, and other than that, I think, uh, unless anyone has anything else, uh, there are no appointments tonight. So, is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. We're adjourned. Thank you.